Welcome everyone. I'd like to bring this meeting to order, back to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ms. Beestrom, since this is your last meeting with us, would you lead it for us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is approval of the agenda. I have nothing to add. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. Recognition. Kim Conflin.
Good evening, board, and good evening, family and friends that are here this evening. On behalf of Eastern Wyoming College and our school district, I would like to recognize our associate graduates for this year. We have Haley Beestrom and Ruth Rose, if you could come and join me over here this evening. Both young ladies, it's been a joy getting to know both of them over the past four years. They have worked extremely hard and are going to come away with actually over seventy college credit hours. They have worked extremely hard and have taken a lot of our college courses in addition to college credit that is going to transfer to each of their programs in the future. And they're both receiving an associate of science degrees in interdisciplinary studies. They both are graduating with distinction from our college, which is a 3.5 GPA or higher. So we're very proud of them and their accomplishments. And I also just want to recognize the parents of the two young ladies. It takes a lot of support, a great support system, to help students get through this and take these college credit hours. It isn't an easy task and they have worked extremely hard and I'm very proud of them. And you should also be, which I'm sure you are, and just want to recognize them this evening. And I'm going to have both of them share with you what their plans are in the near future.
Okay, I literally decided like a couple of months ago, but I'm going to Laramie and I'm gonna go to the University of Wyoming and major in kinesiology.
I'm going to the University of South Alabama and I'm majoring in biology.
Congratulations. We are very proud of you guys.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Kim.
Also, I did share with you our program from our commencement ceremony last week and just also want to recognize a couple of additional local people that received high school equivalency diploma in addition to an elementary education degree from our college. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Shine, shine. Yes, just bring her back up here and Haley can come too. We'll just do it right here. That's a long trip away. You're gonna have to get used to humidity. Good job, parents, too. Which one will dislike it more? You can send, you can pick, no. No, we're very, very proud of you guys. It takes a lot of commitment to do that, and you've saved your parents a bunch of money, too. Yay. All right, we'll move on with further recognitions, and I'm gonna go first. This is a little behind schedule, but this was a letter, Dear Wyoming educators, school leaders, and school board members, Wyoming's strength is built on the foundation of its people and the commitment to community and future generations. Nowhere is this more evident than in our education system. We sincerely thank you, our dedicated educators, visionary school leaders, and committed school board members for the vital role you play in shaping the minds and lives of Wyoming's students. The impressive educational outcomes we see across our state are a testament to your daily dedication, expertise, and leadership. Your work ensures that Wyoming's students receive the high-quality education they deserve. You don't just teach subjects, you build citizens, foster potential, and cultivate a love for learning. You are essential partners in preparing our young people to thrive in a rapidly changing world. Thank you for your passion, your resilience, and your profound investment in the future of Wyoming. Your contributions make our state a truly great place for families and students. All right, other recognitions? Kim?
I would like to recognize our transportation department. I have helped with the driving portion of driver's ed and we've had various needs with the maintenance of our vehicles at different times throughout the driving sessions, and they have been amazing to work with and very accommodating. And I just want to recognize them for that.
Fantastic. Thank you. Billy?
I would like to thank all the sponsors, I guess, about that helped out with prom and then post-prom. Roughly, I think we had 135 kids there at post-prom, so I'd like to thank that committee for putting that on. And I think only maybe 12 were out of town, so we had over half the student population. So, and like I said, I appreciate it.
Good job. Any other recognitions? Randy?
I'd just like to recognize Connie. Once again, she's pulled off a lot to get us all ready to go to Wautiki next week, which means she got a price we can afford and has made arrangements for, I think we're up to 280. Don't quote me on that, that'll be going with us. Excited for that.
Excellent. Thank you, Connie. Anyone else? All right. Visitors' comments? We'll hear from you later. All right, I don't see anything else there. Any visitors' comments on Zoom? Don't see any. All right. Action items, the consent agenda. All right. Action items, the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. Old business? We have no old business. New business? Recommendation for policy G C B A dash E five, school counselor salary schedule.
So, Madam Chair, let me give you just a little bit of history. So there's actually three different ways in which we have counselors in our district. We have those that are school counselors and they may have received tenure. So they are teachers at one time, and then they move to a the teacher pay scale, which is certified non-teaching, and that'll stay the same. The new one that I have a recommendation to you is sort of the bridge between that and then those that actually have their counseling license where they could work not only for a school district, but they could work for mental health or even start their own business. And so with that flexibility, I am recommending to you the approval of policy G C B A dash E, which is the Exhibit Five for the school counselor's schedule, because our recommendation that we brought to you earlier is not been a teacher, does not have a teaching license, but then does not have the full license where they could go out on their own. So this is that bridge in between there, and it's sort of nice to have that flexibility in a small school district.
May I have a motion? It's been moved and seconded to approve policy G C B A dash E five, school counselor salary schedule. Is there any discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion is carried. B, recommendation to move middle school girls wrestling season.
Yes, and thanks, Madam Chair. And so I am making that recommendation to move that, and the reason for that is to be consistent where we are with our middle school sports, with our boys, where they don't have to choose between basketball and wrestling. This will put the girls in the same situation where they can experience both basketball and wrestling and not have to make that decision.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation to move middle school girls wrestling season. Is there any discussion? I'd just like to clarify that there were other districts who have moved too, so they do have competition.
Yes, there should be ample competition.
Yes. All right, any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. C, certified transfer.
Madam Chair, I would recommend the transfer of certified staff of Nick Gray from first grade to third grade.
May I have a motion? May I have a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified transfer of Nick Gray from first grade to third grade. Is there any questions or discussion?
I just wanted to say, I know that this is never easy for anybody involved, and even for the board members that have to vote for or against this, it's not an easy decision to make. And so these are the times we live in, and even though the decisions aren't easy, I know that we can all make them, so we have to just do the best we can. So I appreciate the time and thought that everybody's had to put into this, and I know it's not easy for anybody.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. D, certified transfer.
Again, Madam Chair, I would recommend to you the certified transfer of Alondra Munoz from second grade to fifth grade as a teacher, not as moving in grade level.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified transfer of Alondra Munoz from second to fifth grade. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I have another transfer of a teacher. This one is for Devon Dickey and moving him from fourth grade to third grade. I'll make a motion.
Jason. Mark Jason present. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified transfer of Devon Dickey from fourth to third grade. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. F, certified transfer.
Again, I'm making the recommendation to the board for Amber Murphy from the Title I reading teacher to the, she will be moving to the, she's going to be doing Title I reading and also the elementary ELA instructional facilitator. And that is to help fill the void of an earlier resignation.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified transfer of Amber Murphy from Title I reading to Title I reading and elementary ELA instructional facilitator. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. Certified transfer.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would recommend the transfer of Susie LaCroix from the ELL Coordinator slash preschool liaison into the ELL Coordinator in the title math position, which again was voided earlier due to a transfer of somebody moving out of state.
May I have a motion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified transfer of Susie LaCroix from ELL Coordinator preschool liaison to ELL Coordinator Title I math teacher. Is there any discussion? My question is, then will we have a preschool liaison, or is that gonna fall to you?
Please go ahead.
No, we won't, but I think she's built a good foundation that hopefully we can keep that collaboration open. She is wanting to help, you know, with the Ready for K program and then the adventures and learning and depending where title money comes in. Hopefully, we can help with that still, but it'll kind of just depend on what we find out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. H, permission to post special ed para position.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could, please, I'd like to ask permission to go out for a special ed para.
It's been moved and seconded to approve posting a position for a special education para professional. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion is carried.
What's been going on for so many years now is that, is a concerted effort to destroy that nationalism, that is, to take away the ability of a country to operate independently from a global, you know, construction. And so Trump's come along and if he, and I, you know, I'm always worried about what he's actually doing. Certainly appears like he's sincere. And he is in large measure disconnecting the United States from that global organism and allowing it to prosper, you know, the way, I mean, he's headed that direction. And I am, you know, very, for the first time in years, optimistic about how this might turn out.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion is carried. Aye, classified resignation.
And Madam Chair, Christina Russian is going to be going to Casper to pursue her student teaching. So with that, I would ask approval of the resignation and permission to post. I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified resignation from Christina Russian as general ed para and to post the position. Is there any discussion? Does that mean she's gonna come back when she?
It means that she is going to keep her jersey. Yes.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed name? Motion is carried. All right. F, executive session. May I have a motion to move into executive session under Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five I X to consider and receive some confidential information? It's been moved and seconded to move into executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion is carried. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back in session for the preliminary budget hearing as well as intent to levy one half mil for Eastern Wyoming Bosseys and intent to levy one mil for Eastern Western County Recreation District. Angie, would you like to present our twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budget?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you have the information I gave you guys. I can go through it, or if you just want to ask questions, I don't know if you guys have went through it. It's all estimations still, kind of. I didn't have hard numbers for the general fund because the last two years I put it in, and then when I do May payroll, I have an error that I have to fix. So I thought to be safe, I would follow directions and wait till after the May payroll. So there's that. This house valuations won't be available till June, early July.
Which, I'm sorry, which valuation?
The assessed valuation.
Assessed valuation, okay. So those are gonna be available, just so everyone watching understands, after we have to approve a budget.
Possibly.
Possibly. Okay.
The funding model, the final funding model isn't even released till, you know, mid-July, so right around that same time. So, yes. With the property tax decreases, it does affect, you know, especially the REC district and the Bosseys' funds. Unless there's any question?
So let's do, go through, just so everybody can hear, because I, we, on our next one, let's get it so we can put it on then.
Okay.
So we can share it on Zoom, that's the word I wanted.
For the general fund, it is the salary and benefit package that was approved in April. Replacement of two route Suburbans and one type C or one type D bus was approved. Our funding for the ADM is for seven hundred and forty point eight nine eight compared to the federal or the fiscal year 2025 funding, which was seven sixty-nine point one two zero. The maintenance budget increases to prevent, or to cover the preventive maintenance contracts, and then the approval for the special Olympics funding is included in the general fund preliminary budget. Also, in increasing middle school, high school extrudity coaching contracts was approved by reallocating funds within the general fund activity budget. The special revenue fund stays the same. Major maintenance, per Senate File zero zero three four, there's a one-year educational square footage increase by twenty percent and a cost replacement value percentage multiplier that increased from two percent to two point five percent, and that's ongoing. So that's why the major maintenance budget increased quite a bit for at least next year. The planned projects for that money would be roof repairs, the gym floors, and the fifty-year fire inspection and repairs, and those are just ones we could think of offhand, you know, as things come up. Capital construction, that is basically developed when there's component-level projects or security projects. And at this time, we don't have anything in plan for that. Food services fund budget includes the salary and benefit package approved in April, and the budget reflects adding funds to move away from the federal program at the middle and high school. The EWC Bosseys Fund assumes the continued half mil levy. The activity bond fund budget will remain the same, and the REC fund assumes the one mil levy. And the federal funds are estimated because we still have no allocations for that. We just figured it would be a decrease, so we decreased it a bit, so. That is what I have for the preliminary.
And I will add that special revenue is, is remain the same. But I want people to understand that the EWC budget has decreased by about almost eight thousand dollars, and the REC district has, is projected, we think, will decrease by about fifteen thousand. So, and that is a result of property tax legislation that became law, so. All right, does anyone have any comments or questions about the budget? One in the room? Is there anyone online who has any questions or comments about this preliminary budget? Okay. And that, that's just a question for the newspaper report. Are there any other questions? All right. So do we approve this one, or do we wait till our other hearing? I think we have, okay, that's, I wanted to double-check the preliminary. Okay. And I think we can probably approve the, do we, do we also approve the intent to do the mil levies? Shall we do those in three, or shall we do them together? We'll do them together. All right, may I have a motion to approve the preliminary budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, our intent to levy half mil for Eastern Wyoming Bosseys and our intent to levy one mil for Eastern Western County Recreation District?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the preliminary budget, our intent to levy for Eastern Wyoming Bosseys and Eastern Western County Recreation District. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. All right, and that concludes the budget hearing. We'll make a note, we, we had no public input. All right. Administrators' reports. Anything else, Angie?
I do not have anything else, Madam Chair. Unless there's any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sonya?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just a busy time at the end of the year. It just seems to get faster and faster all the time, but YTOP window ended last Friday, and so Uh, just a busy time at the end of the year, it just seems to get faster and faster all the time, but uh YTOP window ended last Friday and so um just kind of solidifying that preliminary data um to give give to all the staff and buildings, so working on that. Um, I will say coming out, it looks like almost all of content areas and grade levels are at or above the state average, so um with pretty significant growth in some areas, so looks very promising and positive, so kudos to all the staff and students for all their hard work on that. Um. Yeah, just following up with some data meetings, uh and as you can see from all of your actions, um just really working on the transition plan of making sure all, everything's, nothing's forgotten and um everything's picked up. And so with that, I just would like to give a little shout out to um Erin Pazinski too, cuz she's uh extremely organized, um and you can tell how much she supports students by not wanting anything to get forgotten or dropped or anything like that. So um, so I know I'm very appreciative of that. And just, yeah, moving forward, what all trainings do we need to have even without the funding knowing? So that's the tricky part, but um, yeah, that's really what I have for you unless you have questions for me.
Okay, any questions for Sonya? Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandy?
Thank you. Um, like Sonya said, this is just a crazy busy time of year because not only do we have all of our assessments and data meetings, you can throw in some field trips and trip to Waikiki and we have our talent show coming up, our fe- field days coming, so I would encourage you all to join us for that. Um, and then Sonya didn't mention, but a team of us last Friday went down to letters for administrators training. Um, I have to admit, I was not very excited to be out of the building in May to do that, but it ended up being pretty good. Not pretty good, it was really good, I got a lot out of it. So that's something that will um continue for about a year and so hopefully we'll learn, continue to learn great things, so. Um. And yes, I would also give a shout out to Erin, I mean, she encouraged us to go do this. We, I had actually done this training before and it was not good at all, and so they revamped it all and, and we went and did that, but Sonya's not mentioning that. Erin gave us a gigantic spreadsheet that's pages and pages long of all the things that she does and that we need to figure out how to do. So I think we've got a good plan, but I appreciate that, so. And then on top of all of that, we're preparing for summer school, so. That's all I have unless you have questions.
Any questions for Brandy? No, thank you. Anything else, Kim?
Um, I just wanted to share, I, I gave a few report handouts um to you and I, I just wanted to go over a few highlights for you and I apologize, I wasn't here at the last director's reporting. Um. And so I just wanted, first off, the, this pretty large one with the summary sheet of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Um, this was put together um from Eastern Wyoming College with data of all of our outreach locations, and so I highlighted our figures for Newcastle in comparison with the other outreach locations. Um, right now, we're sitting, sitting second highest, uh just with enrollment numbers there in comparison. Um, with Wheatland, Glen Rock, um, Olive Creek County, Torrington. Um, and so we're staying pretty strong there with our numbers and participation with college credit. Um, and then the, the pages, that's just for you to look over, but it, it's just comparisons of each county and what they're doing with all of their college courses that they offer. Um. The number of students that are participating or taking college credit, the um percentages there. And so they use this data this past year for our budget um which increased uh dramatically. Um, so we were happy with that, that um we finally had changes there of support in, in financial support from the college. And so I just wanted to share that information with you to take a look at. The last page is, is Weston County with us in Upton. And the information there um with our numbers from this past year. Um, then the other handout is just for this year's data with the concurrent classes, um the percentages of students who are enrolled, who were enrolled in the fall and in the spring with concurrent classes. Um, that second page shares information with the dual credit classes. We're actually the only school in outreach that let our students take college courses over the summer months. Um. And so I think we're starting to create a trend there. I think other outreach sites are looking into that and seeing it be beneficial for the students to get that college credit over the summer. Um, but we do have, we do have five students enrolled um for this upcoming summer. We um have started having more of our students start taking college classes their sophomore year, especially those associate track students. And they were my guinea pigs this year, but so far, um those sophomores have proven to be very successful with online college credit. Um, and I started them off very slow uh with freshman level type courses, but um what that has allowed me to do is to back off on them having to take as any courses over the summer, so our numbers were a little bit lower going into the summer where the students aren't having to do that cuz they're ahead of the game. Um, but as you can see, they're taking various online um courses that I think are very beneficial for them for transfer. You have art history, you have general biology, public speaking, US history, sociology. Um, so we definitely try and provide them with the gen ed um courses that they're gonna need for transfer there. Um, then with the other page, that's just the site courses. I continue to help with the honor camp. Um, we help service them on getting um them registered. They still offer welding courses for the inmates up there and then I handle all the paperwork for that. Um, so they're continually doing that um every semester at the honor camp. Um, then the last page, that's just our community education and what we have been offering. Um, what has really grown in popularity, um. Brandy Marshall, our high school art teacher, has been dynamic in offering several um amazing adult art classes for our adults, and she's really enjoying that. And so that has grown in popularity and, and she's looking at offering some this summer. And so we're looking forward to that. We also had a huge request for pickleball and that was very popular. We had twenty-five people participate and that was an ongoing um where we had adults attend regularly for that and they sure enjoyed that. So that group, after we ended, they continued on and had more um pickleball gatherings at the fairgrounds and then they're looking at playing at the courts over the summer, so. I think that's gonna be a continual thing that I hope I can help provide um to our adults in the community. Um, the other thing, uh our cooking classes continue to be a big hit too with Vicky Hayman, she does a wonderful job.
The new store, this is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donut. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
The other thing, uh our cooking classes continue to be a big hit too with Vicky Hayman, she does a wonderful job. Um, she did share with us, so which is sad, she's um gonna be finishing up and retiring at the first of the year. So um, I've worked with her ever since I've been in this position and she's been wonderful to work with, so we're hoping hoping that they, she doesn't know the outcome of the replacement of her position yet, but um that has been a great partnership with UW Extension Services. Um, she's done a great job at providing uh cooking classes for us and the adults in our community. And that is all I have to share with all of you. If you have any questions for me.
Does anyone have any comments or questions for Kim? I was gonna say, the, if she wants to go with the bang, she should do the freezer meals again.
Oh, yes.
That was super. And hopefully, the University of Wyoming will continue to send extension, I'm not pointing at Brad, I'm just gesturing in general. Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Brad?
Thanks, Madam Chair, just two quick ones. Congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-five and for those of you that are going to join us, Mr. Hoffman wanted me to remind you, one-thirty on Sunday, some of you better not miss that event, just so you know. Not gonna give you any names, but I think it's very important that some people show up, others you have options.
And is everyone here tonight planning on attending? You won't be there, you'll be there, you'll be there. Jason?
Yes, I will be there.
Great. Yeah, I'm pretty sure Haley will be there.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Jason.
Brad, just a side note on that, um. Could we have somebody with their phone handy? I know the last couple of years we've stood outside amongst the crowd and weren't let in till the crowd gets let in, so. I don't know if there's a super secret bat cave we can use to.
There is, if you call eight eight six two, I will find you and sneak you in.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Alright. Haley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd actually like to introduce your guys' student body president for next year, Presley Fitzwater, and she's going to give the report tonight. Okay. Is it on? Or did I turn it off?
I can hear you.
Is it green? Okay, it's on. Okay, I was trying to make all the notes I could to not forget everything. Um, I would first like to recognize our student council, they just recently put on a pep rally last week. Um, we did this outside at the football field, it was nice. Um, we got sunshine, it was a nice break from the classroom. Um. We did have to move it a couple of times just because of weather, but it still worked out in our favor. We had the dunk tank, so um we got a little bit of fundraising money through uh SoCA Senior, so you got to pay to throw, which was not not um relevant because most people just hit the target anyways, or Mr. Hoffman accidentally hit it for you. Um, so that was really fun. We had a group of seniors that volunteered to have that little bit of competition, so that was a nice little goodbye for them. Um, thank you to all those people who helped with like everything, all the teachers who made sure no kids are wandering off and being high school students, you know. Um, our FFA banquet took place earlier this month. And we have elected ten new officers, so we will be moving from a team of nine to a team of ten. Um, this was a great opportunity for all of us, we had sixteen kids interview. More than half of them were freshmen, so that was a really fun and exciting thing that they got to get out there and do because we have a pretty large group graduating next year. Um, so that's kinda leaving them in a good hands. We elected one sophomore, upcoming sophomore, five, four upcoming juniors and five upcoming seniors. Um, so we'll be a pretty big team. If you want to know the extra details, let us know. Um, we also talked about state awards and how people did it state. We will be having four students travel to nationals, well qualified for nationals. Um, myself, Julie Morris, Aiden Butler and Brooklyn Benchoff. Um, we all qualified in gold through our proficiencies, so that's our supervised agricultural um experience. And so we placed gold in that, so we'll be going to Indianapolis in the end of October, I believe. So that was super exciting. We got to celebrate some smaller state awards that we got on individual bases and team bases, so that was really cool. And then just today, our science department, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Scribner, took a group of students to Scrubs Camp at Black Hill State, um where they got to kinda learn a little bit of what it's like to go into healthcare. Uh, there were stations on biology, chemistry, behavioral science, exercise science, um CPR, uh EMT stuff, what it's like to be a medical student, um and all of the things. And so I think that's everything that I can think of for right now.
Right, and prom was good?
Oh, yeah, prom was great. I forgot about that. Well, it was stressful.
Well.
Good luck to the next year juniors, that's all I gotta say. But yes, it was good, we had a good turnout. Um, it was nice to have local DJs that were willing to do it for free and just come and be involved within the community. We had quite a few um out of town kids, so that was good to experience that with them. Uh, we talk a lot about it in student council, I feel like we're very tight-knit communities within Upton and Sundance and Morecroft and all the places. So it was nice to have them there. Um, they gave us quite some compliments. My date said it was better than his, so that was great, as a big motivational boost. Um, but I think cleanup went pretty good for the sophomores. Like my dad mentioned, we had a pretty good turnout for post-prom, some good prizes and everything. So, yeah, it was very successful.
Excellent. Well, congratulations and we'll look forward to having you here. You do have a pretty high bar to meet. So we just wanna say thank you so much, Haley, you've been a delight to have and we've really appreciated how, how dedicated you've been to being here with us. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
Yep.
You wanna say anything at all?
Um, I don't really have anything to say. I've enjoyed coming. I used to be really scared coming to these, but you guys are actually so nice and thanks for welcoming me. Yeah, okay.
Good luck, good luck next year, we expect great things from you. Alright, um, let's see, superintendent, we did you. Board reports? Yes? Jason, have you been to any meetings?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, a, a few things. Um. We had, uh for those that, that know Bosseys and stuff, um Jody Nichols, um she's gonna be retiring after thirty years of service. So um we have that. Um. We are looking at uh purchasing a, a new building in Cheyenne. Um, I know Cheyenne wanted to try and do their own thing with that and they quickly called us back and said if we would please continue services with them, so um we're looking at and uh barring the inspection and stuff and a new building um in Cheyenne. Um. We got roughly thirty-five students um this, this year. Um, one of the big things and, and a lot of people probably don't know, um. We also have to be inspected by Department of Family Services, DFS, and um we got recertified through uh their inspection, which is, is, is a pretty good feat to, to do. Um, so we're, we are now certified from DFS. Um. And I think we are looking at, um our insurance company called us and said, thank you, but we will no longer be covering you guys, so we are currently looking for new coverage. Um. And I think that is about it.
Okay, thank you. Um. The web board will have a meeting uh next month. Any other board members have anything to report? Alright, um future agenda items. Um. We will, we didn't, we were unable to totally complete our board evaluation, so maybe we could add that to the end of our next meeting? And then we'll have some, some the outcomes of, of that evaluation and our, our goals going forward will be something that we'll want to put on there too, so. Anyone else have future agenda items? Okay. Any discussion items? I'll reach out to those who aren't here to see who will be here for graduation. That'll be my job. All right, any other things to discuss? If not, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.